We thought we'd start there and see how it goes.
Okay.
Okay.
I prefer it on the common, so I can skate at lunch.
There you go, he wants to skate at lunch, I'm doing it all for Ryan.
Oh. You know how to skate?
The rec field is so far away.
Jeffrey.
Very excited about this.
Yeah, I know.
You know how to skate, cause you said you know how to ran, run, and you ran in the race.
That's my son.
It's true.
Are you a skater?
It's true, I did beat you in that race.
With my ten year old.
I get it, I get it, so.
Uh, yeah, I played hockey this morning, so.
Oh nice, yeah, we're, we're hockey people. Um, moving on to that, so, um, when I had to, when we had to come up with the capital plan, which parks I'd never done before, um, but Ryan helped us, you know, go through that and think about it. One of the big things we're running into is, um, the playground at the rec field is, needs to be replaced.
Yep.
Uh, and so, um, two pieces down there definitely have to be replaced, they're gonna be safety issues next year, I mean, we, we gotta haul them up. So, I did see on the capital plan that there was like third year route of this capital plan that someone had put in money to replace the playground, and he told me that the town common?
Town center.
Town center people.
Jesse came in to us once.
Oh, okay.
Jesse Toro had, had come in and, um, at Alicia Muck's request to sort of discuss what they did over there.
Sure.
At the school, to see whether or not there was an option, and what the funding options were and that sort of thing. So that's why it was on there, it's cause it was like, you know, it was, it wasn't figured out yet, but it was one of those things that, that needs to be done.
Yeah, oh absolutely, so, um.
So the CIPC did, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee did discuss like this too. So they, they put it under the purview of the parks, since you guys were captured it, and it's on the plan where you guys asked for it to go.
Okay.
Currently, so.
So, um, so we basically, well, we, I, so, we met with, um, a representative from O'Brien and Sons about the park and different ways to replace the equipment down there, the play equipment down there and what have you. The biggest thing is that it's not ADA compliant, and he was telling me that, you know, it's thirty years old, uh, it was built in nineteen ninety, based on the structures that are there, um, so I just wanted to let you know, we're working with him on doing that, and we're actually planning on putting a CPA application in, um, in January.
For, for like a furnished then install thing?
For a whole new playground. Um, so, you know, I'm not quite sure, we've got a few, um, figures out there, but the whole thing is, once you start replacing, is what he's telling me. Once you start replacing it, you have to bring your playground to be ADA compliant.
Hundred thousand, I think?
Close to one, one fifty, ma- maybe two, because we have to resurface.
Yep.
Um, but I'm just thinking, you know, for CPA, they take out five year loans, make the payments over five years, forty grand a year, that's less than what they, less than what they bring in, so, that's kinda gonna be our push for that, um, that's how we're gonna approach it. Um, but, so, just to let you know, we are doing that, and we're working on that. Um, but I'll work with you a little later, cause he keeps telling me, and this Andy, um, that we don't need to get other bids. He get, I don't know why he keeps telling me, he goes, oh no, no, we can, we can work this and, you know, we don't need to get other bids, you can just work with me, and so I'm just like quite positive about that.
The only way that would be true is if it was on the state bid list.
Okay.
Um, but we'd still want it to be a competitive process.
Sure, well, but, yeah, but, okay, so anyways.
Happy to work with him, but we need to go through the proper procedures.
Oh yeah. Yeah, well, that's what I was saying too, that's, that's not how I understood it, but I wasn't gonna tell him likewise yet, until I had it backed up by anyone else. So, yeah, so at least a hundred, toward closer to two hundred is what we're looking at, so, so just trying to bring you up to anything, you know what we're doing.
Yeah, thanks for doing all that, appreciate it.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, Sandra, thanks.
Can I ask a question, how about the bandstand roof, did you talk about that at all?
Well, that is on the capital, um, planning, that's, uh, our number one priority.
Excellent.
Yep, so for next year.
The walkway also?
The walkway, well.
From the bandstand up to the street?
Oh.
Cause that's the one that keeps cracking, and has those big.
Um, well, I, I will tell you that we did, um, reach out to one person about redoing the whole track, because it's broken in a lot of different places, and we were given a really high price to do it, and, um, it's just, we're running out of time right now, so we're hoping to maybe in the spring meet with them again, and possibly redo the whole, the whole thing.
Cause I was more concerned about the initial access there.
Oh, to get, in the beginning, like from the beginning gate?
From the parking lot up to the bandstand, that, it's the widest section, it's not the, you know.
Not the actual walk part.
That's where you have all the cracks and so forth.
Sure, Francois?
I had a very quick comment on that, and it's just a quick question regarding the, that access, is that perchance ADA compliant? And the reason I'm bringing this up is, is because my understanding is, is that there are some very good funds at the state level for bringing, um, uh, ADA compliance into, uh, parks and recreation areas. Maybe something to keep in mind, especially if you are considering doing a, uh, uh, a significant amount of work, and so funds can potentially be brought in, especially when you're adjusting it to make it ADA compliant, just something to keep in mind.
Okay, well, what, can you send me that information?
I will try to attempt to.
Or send it to Ryan and then send it to me, yeah, that'd be great, thanks. I mean, we've applied for different grants in the past.
Yep.
Um, and for the parks, I think we got a grant maybe twenty years ago, we haven't gotten anything since.
Well, the basic question would be, is, is it currently ADA compliant? If it is not, then to bring it into ADA compliance, now then you have the ability to start working as a grant to make it ADA compliant.
We can make it non-ADA compliant pretty quick, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm just saying there's ways on which it can be looked into here.
Um, I know the playground isn't, because there's, there's no entrance into it, um, but I think the original, uh, walkway into the park is, and the basketball court is, and I'm not sure about the skate park.
Okay.
So.
All right, thanks.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for open session? Nope, okay, uh, let's get it started with announcements then.
All right, so the first announcement we have is the Hubbardson Light Fight is back. So you may have seen the flyers, it's gonna be over two weekends, December sixth through the eighth, and December thirteenth through the fifteenth, from five to eight P M. It's one of the signature special events in Hubbardson. For those who don't know what it is, uh, houses and organizations and businesses throughout town decorate their house, there's a formal map put together, and residents, and non-residents come from all around to do the tour, and then online voting will decide who is the most joyous, and what was the other one?
Traditional.
Oh, there it is, traditional, or go big, or stay home, which is a new category this year. So, um, I know I'm bringing my family up, my kids wanna vote, they like to vote for things, so we're gonna do the tour, hopefully do some live, uh, Facebooking of their reactions, as long as they're positive, and, uh, hope to see people there. It's a big draw, I know Katie's working with some of the local restaurants to stay open later, to offer hot chocolates, so you can make a whole, a whole thing of it either weekend.
Okay.
Next one is brunch with Santa, this is gonna be at the, um, Hubbardson Center School Cafeteria on December seventh, from ten to noon. All right, this is a, a, a big event every year, photo opportunities, and, um, people should, should bring their, bring their kids and families to this, it's very good. And this year they're adding a gingerbread house contest to it as well, it's the first annual gingerbread house contest. So this will be at the Center School from nine to ten, uh, you said you were gonna participate, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna do the slade building, and that's gonna win.
Will it be crumbling?
ADA compliant slade building.
That's ambiance.
And then the last announcement is the, uh, the town common concert and tree lighting, um, and that you're heavily involved with this.
Yeah, uh, the, so this is, we're doing it in conjunction with, with a church function this year, uh, at, at the, uh, um, well, they're having, basically with a concert, uh, function that's going on this year as well, to sort of ha- have it all at the same time, so December fourteenth, Sunday, uh, Saturday, December fourteenth, at five thirty to seven thirty. Uh, we had sort of done it separately, just because there was no coordination, uh, not on purpose or by accident, just because, uh, the last few years we've gotten into it, but it's growing every single year, and I expected to do it this year too. So there's a number of people involved, from the school, from the seniors, to the church, to the town center committee, and, and we're all just, uh, do our part to, to get out there and, and, um, uh, I don't know, celebrate that, that the Lions have always shown up too, in their new, their new, um, uh, cart, or their new, uh, van, or bus, what do you call it, food truck?
Yes.
Right, yeah, I got there eventually.
Truck wagon.
Got there eventually, we'll, uh, you know, I'm sure that they'll be involved too, so anyway, but I hope people come up to that.
And if they haven't been, I, I went last year, and, uh, it's just, it's good, just kicks the season off, it's, it's a nice little event. Um, some of the lights in the town common will be on for the, for the light fight, but the official opening of the holiday season will be at this tree lighting ceremony on the tour team.
Okay, um, so new business? We've got the, uh, the Green Communities Application and Update, hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
So this is Karen Chapman, one of our planners from MRPC, who's been working on this, uh, Green Communities Application for quite a while for us, one of the very first things I did here.
Yes. Thank you, like Ryan said, I'm Karen Chapman, I'm a senior planner at Monticlet Regional Planning Commission. Um, we've been working for two years on this, I have a quick sort of, would've been a presentation, but didn't wanna bring my laptop and my, you know.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to go quickly over the application, what's required in the application, so there's five criteria to meet designation. Criteria one and two have to do with zoning, as of right zoning for, uh, renewable energy, uh, generation, or R and D facilities, or manufacturing facilities, and expedited permitting for those, for those things. Uh, criteria three is the energy reduction plan, which you are required to approve. Uh, criteria four is the fuel efficient vehicles, and criteria five is the stretch code adoption. So, criteria one and two, um, you have, um, light manufacturing allowed in your commercial district along Route sixty-eight. You have to allow, uh, there has to be room for a fifty thousand square foot facility, which I evaluated some parcels in the commercial district, and there were three parcels identified, you only need one to, to comply with this. So you have three, um, parcels.
And, and any action, or just you have to have them?
You just have to have them, you have to have it available for a fifty thousand square foot building.
Check.
Check. Um, criterion two is to adopt an expedited application and permitting process of one year at most. So your light manufacturing is allowed by right, so it only has to go through site plan review, which is a less than one year process, so you comply with that. So documentation to comply with both of these criteria, are a zoning map, zoning sections description, zoning definitions, yield calculations, and a legal counsel letter confirming all of those things. So I sent all of that information to Ryan, who sent it to your town council, and they are composing a letter as we speak. Then criteria, I'm gonna skip three for now. Criteria four is fuel efficient vehicles, so you've already adopted your fuel efficient vehicle policy, and the school has as well. Um, you have a vehicle inventory, Ryan gave me all of the vehicles, I've put it in the correct format, um.
And there, uh, it's on here about non-exempt vehicles, but that was, is, most of ours are non, are exempt, correct?
Most of them are exempted, yeah.
Right, okay.
If not all.
Okay.
Um, so like I said, you and the school have passed the policy, the inventory is completed, and the plan for replacing non-exempt vehicles is within that policy. Criteria five, adopt the stretch code, minimize the life cycle cost of all newly constructed homes and buildings, you passed that at this town meeting this past, um, June. That shouldn't say ten eighteen, that's somebody else, June fourth, I believe it was. And I requested a certified vote from the town clerk Lori, and she provided that to me. So back to criteria three, which is why I'm here.
Mm-hmm.
So there's two parts to the energy reduction plan, first you establish an energy use baseline inventory, and using Mass Energy Insight, which is a database that the state provides for us to enter all of the energy usage for buildings, vehicles, street and traffic lights, open spaces, water and sewer. So Hubbardson has gasoline, diesel, electricity, and heating oil, fairly simple. A lot of towns have, you know, propane, and wood chip burning, and, you know, natural gas. So those are your four, uh, energy usage types. You have five buildings, thirty-five vehicles, of which five are not exempt, two street lights, two school zone lights, and the one blinking light, one water pump, which supplies water to here, the library, and the school, and then one open space, the Curtis Recreation Area. And your total energy usage for all of that, including the school, is ten thousand sixty-one million BTUs.
Annually?
For FY nineteen. I mean, every year it's gonna be different, depending on the weather.
Yeah.
But, that's what we're applying under.
Yeah.
So that's, that's your baseline usage. So in order to, um, comply with all of this, you have to reduce that by twenty percent in the next five years, and that's what the energy reduction plan goes into.
So just real quick, if you don't mind.
Mm-hmm.
So the calculations to get to that, cause it's an important starting point, obviously, to, to, to use it as a baseline, um, to, to be able to reduce, um, are, you know, for example, like a vehicle, is the, uh, typical, is there like a, uh, you know, a table or something where you, you plug in the type of vehicle you've got, and it generates a certain amount of output that it does, and then you just add that to the calculation and get there? Is that how that's all done, or?
No, so what I do is I enter in the gallons of gasoline or diesel into this MEI system.
Yeah.
And it automatically does all the calculations for us.
Okay.
Which is great, that would be a nightmare, I think, if we had to do that on our own.
Yep. So that's just total amount of gallons that, or the diesel fuel that the town garage will get on an annual basis, and then that gets plugged in, and, okay.
So I got the fuel from, um.
Travis.
Travis. Um, and I enter it by department, and so I know how many, how many gallons the fire department used, I know how many gallons the highway department used, and such.
Okay.
And so the second part of the energy reduction plan is the plan itself, demonstrating a twenty percent reduction of energy, energy use after five years. And so Ryan organized energy audits of all the facilities, including the school, and they do three parts. They do a lighting evaluation, can we replace the lights with LED lights, is there anything we can do to increase that energy efficiency? They do mechanical, which is the HVAC, you know, rooftop units, boilers, and envelope, is there, um, you know, weatherization type things, insulation, weather stripping, windows, ti- things like that, so.
And that's free, those aud- energy audits are free?
That energy audit was free. The intention with the free audit is the company, um, gets the work to do the projects, because they did an audit for you for free. And under, uh, under Green Communities, there's an, there's a procurement exemption, where if you work with a vendor who's approved by the utility, which this auditor was, um, you don't have to go through procurement, you can just use the utility's approved vendor to do the work, which is, it's great. Unless it's over a hundred thousand, then you do have to do procurement, but if it's under a hundred thousand, we can just use them. So, um, we got the audit reports last week, and so I put all the projects identified in the audits into this spreadsheet, so this gets turned in with the application, so if you look down, so you put the building, what building it is, DPW, library, slade, the school, what kind of project it is, um, when you think it's gonna be completed, how much it's gonna, you know, the auditors give you how much they think it's gonna save, and so the bottom line comes down, at the very bottom, total MM BTU savings, that nineteen thirty-one. That's what the auditors say, if we do all of these projects, we will reduce your energy usage by one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one BTUs, m- million BTUs.
Over five years.
Over the five years. Or if you do all these projects quicker, then you look for more projects.
Which is around twenty percent.
Right, so twenty percent of the ten oh six one is two thousand and twelve MM BTU, so you're very close.
Yep.
So that goes in with the application as well. Um, and that's it, that's pretty much it.
Okay, so, that's great, so we're, um.
So I assume that Ryan sent you all the documents I sent to you on Friday? The actual energy reduction plan.
Check, I'll put up if you wanna reference anything in the. Can you just talk about the, uh, application process?
The process?
The grant?
Sure.
And the money, which people care about?
Oh, that's right, the money, I forgot about that part. So we'll submit the application on Friday, hopefully, um, DOE, our Department of Energy Resources, will announce the designations in December, which is when they usually do it. And so they'll, um, they'll tell you, yes, you were designated, and this is how much money we're gonna give you. Every town gets a base of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then the additional monies is based on per capita and equalization values, and some big complicated formula. So you should probably get around a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, so that starts out. Um, once you have that information, you take this table and decide which projects are we gonna do first, using that hundred and thirty-five thousand. And you have to submit a new table, or, or modified table, saying these are the projects we wanna do, and that's due in February. And once you submit that, they do all the contracts and everything, you sign the contracts, and then you can start working.
Did we establish a fund, I, I mean, they have, I just have no idea, don't remember, did we, like, just as far as the mechanics of receiving and spending that money?
Um, we can do that once it's approved.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to have a dedicated fund for that.
Yeah.
And you have to track it, so, um, administrative section, uh, project section. And what happens is you'll get the first twenty-five percent of the grant, you'll get that money, and you do projects. Once you depleted that, they'll give you fifty percent, and then when you've depleted that, the last twenty-five percent, they won't give you until you're done. And so once you deplete all of that money, you do a final report, this is what we did, here's some pictures of what we did, and you submit that, and once that's approved, you can apply for a competitive grant, those are every March, and you can apply for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in those rounds.
Okay, can I have a question first for you, or?
Yeah, can we talk about the MM BTU savings here that you have on your?
Yes.
Graph, um, that doesn't meet what you have on your.
No, it doesn't.
End down here, so what's the discrepancy, I'm not sure, can you explain that a little bit? It says, so we're not, we're not re- reaching the twenty percent reduction if we do all these projects, right?
Nineteen percent, so if we're reducing, um, from ten million to almost two million, would be twenty percent, so, so it's nineteen percent.
It's almost twenty percent, but we've put, uh, narrative in the plan that says we're gonna evaluate some other things that the auditors may not have gotten to, to make up that.
Also modify staff behavior.
Right.
Uh, and commit to certain, um, anti-idling and other types of items that will get us to that twenty percent.
So with this, with these proposed changes, and with what you just mentioned, we will attain the twenty percent. Excellent.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So you just talked about the, um, the way reimbursement goes, with the twenty-five fifty, twenty-five or whatever. You know, uh, projects don't always work out exactly, uh, on how much money you necessarily, we receive on things, I didn't really word that correctly, but, so let's just say we got twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, what we wanted to do was gonna cost thirty percent. Could we spend some of our own money and then use a reimbursement?
Absolutely.
Can it, it can be combined, okay.
Yeah.
Not that we're like, just overflowing with money to spend on stuff, but, I know you were gonna say that, but just.
Something you're saying, you just passed out.
All right, twenty-six percent, twenty-six, one more percent, I'm just trying to see if there's flexibility in that, it sounds like there is, okay.
It's not dissimilar to what we do with chapter ninety, so you outlay that money and then get reimbursed, and so, we don't have a pot of money for that, we, not the right way to say it, but borrow against our cash flow and get reimbursed, knowing it's coming back, so.
Mm-hmm.
We're used to this type of reimbursement.
And they're very, very quick with disbursements, so, you know, I would send an email to the person in charge of that and say, you know, here's the accounting sheet for Hubbardson, they've exhausted twenty-five percent, and she'll send an email back that says, I'm putting it in for a payment. And you get it like, w- a week or two.
Okay.
And some of this is exciting, the, um, library trustees are talking about, you know, HVAC replacement in the, in the Clark Library, and part of the capital plan, and maybe phasing it over time, there's a, a pretty big chunk here, uh, for the Clark Library HVAC system. So we could prioritize some of these projects with the capital plan and, and knock some of that stuff out, some alternative funding, so.
It's certain, you know, based on our agreement with the schools, and how the regional agreement and all that stuff works, there's maybe some possibilities there too, right? Cause over a certain amount of money, we're responsible for, for, uh, come up, coming up with money for it, so I wonder if there's anything there too.
And they partnered with us to, to get this done, so, um, hopefully they, we see that reflected in their capital plan, cause they know sometimes not to over ask, well, maybe they'll actually ask to fix some things in the Center School, knowing that we have this money.
Nice. So do we need to take any action beyond what we've already done?
You just have to vote to approve the energy reduction plan as written.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the energy, energy reduction plan as presented.
Discussion, on paper?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Excellent.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen worked really hard on this application, so did, um, several members of the staff coordinating things, uh, Lori Reed for sure,
And so.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
With all the audits before she moved on to her new role, and then in her new role, uh, Travis, the fire chief, and, um, everyone who, the library, who helped people tour, it was a pretty big effort by the staff to, uh, to try and get this, this funding.
Couple years, nice.
And so there is, um, I forgot to mention, there is, you can submit for administrative costs up to ten thousand dollars, and that, you could pay your employees for the time that they spend on Green Communities activities, that saves you money in your operating budget.
Really?
No, no, you're not.
Good news.
So if Lori spent, you know, ten hours a month on whatever invoicing, or who knows, um, she could charge that time to Green Communities administrative costs, so it's something we can talk about when you get designated, when we take that next step.
Okay.
Excellent.
And so you have a REPA grant, Regional Energy Program Assistance Grant, with MRPC for fifteen hundred dollars, cause this ends my work on this, but that grant will allow me to help you with the next part.
All right, well hopefully we, we, uh, do our part.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Okay. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you'll have them sign the letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, um. So moving on, we've got the, the next item is the Building Department, uh, intermunicipal agreement approval, which we, we've seen.
Yes.
Can you just pull that out?
So just wanted to, to talk a little bit about, um, what we're proposing for your approval tonight with the Building Department. So I worked pretty extensively with the Gardner staff over the last few months to talk about, um, the good things that are going on in the Building Department, and some of the things that can be improved, spent some time in the community talking about, um, and with the staff about things that they, they would like to both see continue with the Building Department and improve, and then talk to Mayor Hawke about how we can make those things happen. Um, so what this agreement represents is a commitment to regionalize with Gardner for the next three years. There is a ninety day out clause, if either party doesn't feel like, um, the other side is living up to their standards, and for residents to hear that, why that might happen, you know, there's changing administration right now in Gardner, there's changing in staff, there are changing priorities here, so things can happen, so both sides talked about wanting that clause just in case, but the, the staff and the workers, uh, have all committed to this, and integrated our processes together, uh, and are, are committed to this agreement. So there's that protection, uh, costs.
So with the change that's going to be taking place in Gardner, Mark, obviously moving on to Westminster.
Yes.
Won't affect this agreement at all, that has supposedly been made?
So they, we need to approve it, and they still need to approve it, so.
Oh, they still do?
Yes, but, um, I'm.
Any reason to think that, that someone else might feel different than Mark did?
There's always that chance, but I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
So my opinion is no.
Yeah.
Uh, this is still an agreement that would wanna be made, so we provide them additional revenue to do this agreement, and, and, um, you know, they provide us with those services, so, I wouldn't see why they wouldn't wanna continue it.
Uh-huh.
So the, the three years would begin as of July one, so this would ret- be retroactive back to July first, cause we have been working without an IMA for the last few months. Uh, the cost sharing, so I talked about this increasing, um, a couple thousand dollars from the two thousand dollars a month that was negotiated by the, uh, team at UMass as part of a community compact grant. So we found that the, uh, zonings, the zoning enforcement was, um, it needed some clarification, and, and we needed to figure out that piece, not, not new to Hubbardson's history to try and figure out zoning and zoning enforcement, zoning determinations as well. So we discussed in this M IMA that there would be a thirty day, uh, timeframe for any, uh, zoning determination that was submitted correctly. So if someone fills out the form for zoning determination, the building commissioner has thirty days to return that. That's something the residents were asking for, and we had a couple issues with timeliness on that. They're not easy, it ties, ties up a lot of the staff time, so, uh, Gardner has the right to charge for that process, a fee that they would get to keep that revenue. But, uh, for us, that, we don't get that many, the trade-off of helping residents through that process, and potential applicant businesses, is worth the save. A fee that they would get to keep that revenue, but uh for us, that we don't get that many, the trade off of helping residents through that process and potential applicant businesses is worth the say. Fifty dollars would be given to Gardner to accomplish that.
How about for a hearing?
So hearing is part of the regular duties found in this. So that's zoning determination, so that's when someone calls and says, I'd like to put a house on this lot, does it comply?
Yep.
Uh to get an actual letter from a building commissioner takes some legal effort, takes some time. Um so we wanna give a little bit of time, but also make sure that people are notified and they'll be told right upfront whether or not they can get that answer, cause sometimes they can't. If a real estate agent calls, for example, we're not gonna tie up the building staff necessarily for thirty days on something when it's their due diligence and they can pay money to have that legal investigation done. So other than that uh increase, the, the money's flat and already approved for this year, as part of our budget process, the twenty-six thousand one hundred. Uh there's a two and a half percent increase each year of this agreement for the next two years that locks us into that price. We get to keep any revenue from uh building permits that we get, which um almost covers this depending on the year. Uh we do have clerical staff that works, um that's not covered by this, so it's not necessarily e- even in terms of revenue and expense, but it, it definitely doesn't hurt to get that revenue in. Any permit over twenty-five hundred, we have to negotiate with the mayor of Gardner on uh the split and that doesn't mean, you know, they get everything over twenty-five hundred. It, it depends on the type of permit. That would really impact us for something like a solar project. But the trade off is, I don't, some, some people don't know how many inspections need to be done, there's dozens and dozens of inspections in a solar project. So to commit their staff, they would wanna take some of that revenue in outside the normal process, which is why we set it at twenty-five hundred. We haven't had a permit this year that was over twenty-five hundred, so it's significant projects that, that require this type of thing. We did have one, but it was the uh library roof which we exempted, cause it's our own money paying our own staff.
Okay.
And to be transparent, Gardner allowed us to waive that and didn't say that, you know, that fee needed to be charged. As part of the agreement and then worked with us in this board to pass a municipal exemption for, for building permits for municipal buildings. We just highlighted some of that language here, the twenty-five hundred language. The rest of it is uh your standard IMA language, except for the scope of services, which hasn't changed from the last time. Uh I showed it to you, but this spells out what the commissioners and the building inspectors will do for us. Uh as part of this, the building commissioner has committed to weekly hours. In Hubbardston, we didn't, we didn't hold them to a time, we didn't say you have to be here one hour, just so it could be more flexible, we'd rather have them doing inspections than say necessarily sitting in the office, but. Someone from the inspection staff will be here to answer questions in town and to clear the backlog of any questions that are pending from the staff. So that is another um thing we were able to negotiate i- in order to have more resident services.
Okay, so you need a vote from us?
And what's the um, what's the root cause of this conjunction, this partnership? Is this a cosplay?
So a couple things, one, it's really hard to find uh inspectional staff.
Mm-hmm.
So um towns around Massachusetts, especially in this area, are all regionalizing in order to, there's just not enough inspectors. There's not enough really anything on the musical side, but this is a s- a specialty that's needed. That there, uh people just aren't getting the licenses that are, that are needed to do it, so when we had a retirement, we were able to find an interim, but that one was retiring. So I, I thought this would be a more permanent solution. That's one thing and the cost of partnering with an operation like Gardner that does a lot of inspections. Was, was cheaper for us and more efficient than say partnering with Barry, which has a bunch of smaller towns that share just a building commissioner and you would still need to have. The other staff, uh wires, plumbing inspectors, uh they don't provide that, so Gardner provides.
Which we looked at and we talked to them, who are the, cause there's a few of the Gwinnett towns that are doing it together as well, whether we join all in, it was just gonna be uh.
We looked at Princeton, we looked at Barry, we looked at Westminster, um and, and UMass did an analysis for us and, and Gardner represented the most. Efficient use of our money for the most services that we could get.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion then to approve the IMA with Gardner for the building department services and zoning enforcement.
Second motion?
Discussion, on paper?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright. Okay, um conveying town property and affordable housing auctions on Ragged Hill. Hi guys.
Hi.
Hello.
Welcome back, you guys wanna come up? Stay right there, you can wait, whatever you want.
Dan.
It's, it's, it, I, I think we're having here.
Stay there, don't get up, yeah, we're fine.
Yeah. It's really, you're trying to hurt our pitch, so it's kinda up to.
Last week, we understood that there was some feedback that you were going to get.
So we did get some additional information, um we did a search of um of our records in two thousand fifteen, it was voted to convey these, these lots. One of them was our, was then afterwards, lot thirty-three was conveyed as part of a land swap deal for uh what was to be the new senior center. So leaving four lots, all still valid according to our town council, that vote does allow the board of selectmen to convey this land, which means we don't need to go back to town meeting. To dispose of this property, which means you could do it today, um if, if you wanted to do it. I also asked because of the conversation last week, is there any restrictions, is there anything that can't be done, could you not use it for affordable housing? And they said there's no, there's no restrictions that they can see on your ability to convey it based off the vote at town meeting. So town meeting said, please dispose of this in the best way possible and they gave you that power.
Mm-hmm.
So you have it, I talked to the chairman, chairman wanted to bring this back up, so this continues to be um talked about and we can start planning to do it.
So will we convey if we all agree to this one lot to the affordable housing?
I think so. I mean, that, that, that's the way it sounded to me.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we'd go beyond that for any reason.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, I, uh welcome your thoughts on this now that it has become more, you know, we were, we were talking about it in theory a little bit more before and now it's, you know.
Sure.
Um meaning in theory that, right, but it may have had to have gone through a number of other steps before it got to where it's currently at, which it doesn't, so. I think, you know, I, I don't know, uh it doesn't sound like our opinions changed at all about moving forward with it and it sounds like one lot and.
Are all those lots the same size, Ryan? Do you know?
I don't know exactly.
One has more frontage.
They're all built.
They're all roughly, and a little more land.
They're within a, you know, whatever, both tolerance.
Mm-hmm.
I think one is fifty feet more frontage.
But acreage wise, they're all pretty similar.
Pretty much the same, okay.
I don't, I don't think that there'd be any particular reason to give us the biggest lot, I mean, we're talking about putting an affordable house on it.
Yeah, yeah.
True.
So, but I do think.
Lot's what I'm thinking, you know.
And probably an end or, uh one on the end, right, with that, I'm just, for whatever reason, if somebody wants to buy a couple of them and they wanna buy them next to each other, you know?
Yeah, 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 it would make. I think it would make more sense to, to do it that way.
If you designate one lot, then the next step for us, I think you just need to designate it, you don't need to convey it right now, right? How would this work?
So uh we can do a bunch of different, so in terms of an RFP, so you could get creative and say, you know, we will sell each lot to someone who wants it. We'll sell it to s- someone, we prefer someone to package it, we prefer someone to do it all affordable housing. Um or just basic, hey, anyone can buy, buy it and do what they want. So the RFP, request for proposal can be written however you want, we wanna sell this land, we would give preference to this. In order, um and then not convey one of them. To be held in.
Our next step is.
For the use for affordable housing.
Is if you, if you tell us which lot, is then we invite Carolyn Reed out and her committee from Habitat will tell us.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, to have a beautiful lot.
Whether it's a good lot. Right, so.
You could.
I didn't wanna invite her out unless everybody was gonna go along with this.
Sure, right.
You could also, cause I mean, it's getting towards winter, so I don't think there'll be a mad rush at this day, you could have her come out and say.
Which one?
Which ones would work.
Yep.
Um in preference and then decide based off of.
That sounds like a good idea.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with Dan though, it should, I don't think it should be one in the middle.
Yeah, right.
But it could be one on either side, right, oh which one's better, this one or this one sort of thing, cause I don't think that matters to us, right?
You know, yeah. So leave that open, you know?
Right.
I mean, from our perspective, we're, we're looking at it as something that the town gets the advantage of the fact that it is already starting to move forward. In putting something in the affordable housing uh inventory.
Yep.
It's, it's the goodwill, uh it does not have to be the prime piece of property. I mean, if that's what you decide to do, that's fine, we're not saying that you have to. Uh it really is for the purposes of getting the inventory started and we have other mechanisms that we are also looking at to also increase that inventory for the town. Not necessarily to conveyance a lot, but it's certainly something that we are entertaining. This will be a very goodwill, a, a very good goodwill gesture uh vis a vis uh what the requirements are from a state level. And from that perspective, I think the fact that you're conveying whatever piece of land you think down the road might be the best applicable, that is great. I think that at this point in time, having us go back to uh Carolyn Reed and start talking and having that discussion, say, you know, here are the options. She might say, yes, you know, any of these is suitable, or this one is better suited, or this one is least suited, or not suitable at all. For us to come back with an answer of that nature back to the board, so that we can then come up with a final decision, that maybe in two thousand twenty, we can start.
Breaking ground.
Breaking ground or something of that nature would be great.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Well, if, if, I'm sorry, if, if we didn't want to, for example, include the largest lot.
Sure.
So now you're talking, yeah, the three, is that another possibility of presenting it to her that way?
That's fine. Absolutely.
The only thing, I don't know about the topography, I think these drops, drop down quite a bit in back, so it may be that one is a lot more expensive to develop than another, I don't know.
Uh.
We could have a look at the three.
Mm-hmm.
I actually walked those lots.
What do you?
They're pretty good lots.
Are they? Okay.
Yeah, I think all three of them, and the, and then, and way in the back, it drops down to like a swamp, but where the house would be, would be up.
You've got room for septic and, okay, well then.
Yeah, I think most of them lots are, are pretty decent.
So do you have a recommendation for which one we should offer up?
Well, lots of odds not here tonight.
I don't know the size of them, but I would go with what Dan said, either offer the one up next to the lot we just land swat or, or the one that's probably down the road.
Mm-hmm.
Or is it the other way? Okay.
That makes more sense.
Why would you rent a lot, sorry?
Yeah, and if that's enough info for now, then.
Yeah.
Great.
Absolutely.
Because, eh, but also, you know, we're sensitive to, you know, people who are providing services such as Habitat for Humanity don't want to have to go through another extra steps. A lot of extra steps, if this is, isn't an extra step for them, they don't feel like it's a big deal to sort of select, then great, have them.
We don't know that, I mean, they're not here, we cannot, and they have not seen these lots, this was really a, a presentation that they did to us, very hypothetical, I think.
Right, alright. Mm-hmm.
It was a lot of good information that we provided to them at that point in time about the availability of lots. Other mechanisms by which housing could theoretically be potentially be rehabbed and so forth. And I think that from this perspective, I think we need that feedback from Habitat, from, from humanity and, and get that, get that feedback back then to you.
Good. Mm-hmm.
For you to make a final decision.
Okay.
But I think at this point in time, it would be good to just be able to get an understanding that from a planning board perspective. You're in agreement that the concept is feasible.
Yep.
That we will take one lot, be that lot A, B, C, or D, whichever one it is. Uh that's still to be determined, but at least that in principle, we are agreeing that one of these lots makes sense for it to be designated as one that will be uh used to establish affordable housing.
That's fine, I'm seeing, yeah.
Good, I think you got that, so.
So. Yep.
And it's great that we don't have to go back to town hall that, that, right, gotta get things straightened out with uh the community, the CPA funds.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Yeah.
And a, there's a lot of moving parts to it, but it really helps.
Yes.
That we can do that and we can advance on Hurless, cause there are very few of these lots in the towns they serve.
Hmm.
That doesn't need to go through ZBA or variances or demolition or.
Right.
So I think it gives us a quick start.
Yeah.
Nice, okay.
Great.
Okay.
Alright, so um if there's nothing else, we'll see again about this in the future sometime.
Okay, you gonna send us a note or a vote, vote or anything you have to?
That sounds great.
I don't know, so Ryan, I mean, I don't think we don't have anything really to vote on besides the, the concept, right?
It's okay with me.
Yeah, so if, um.
Basically, when you come back after admit, meeting with her, then the, would stand the, for a vote.
They'll choose a lot.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Right, so can we just make sure that we are in agreement which lots we're talking about, because I know that there was originally talked about five lots, but there's now really only four lots.
It's the four contiguous lots.
That is the four contiguous lots on a.
I'll, I'll send you the, on Ragged Hill.
Right, right.
On Ragged Hill mode, if you can just, if you can just send us a letter to, or, or basically to the chair. Uh and let her know that these are the lots in question for consideration for us to be able to talk with Habitat for Humanity. I think that would make it also good for her to understand that there's serious consideration by the town of this year.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about that a little bit, I mean, are we, are we already at the point where it's going to be one of the N lots?
Sounds like it.
That we're deciding on, so we're going, only gonna be offering her two lots to consider then.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And that's fine.
I think, Dan, these are the lots here, I believe, um so they're all pretty much, the four are pretty much the same, the N one.
Yep.
Is a triangular.
Yeah, that one looks a little smaller, that might be the one.
Yeah, I think so.
The one farthest down on Ragged Hill, cause that large.
Do you have a lot number?
Uh, two twenty.
I do.
Two, two zero?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I think the one we land swapped was thirty-three.
I'll send you a map in the letter.
That'd be great.
That makes sense.
I, I would appreciate that.
Yeah. So say two twenty, um.
There, yeah, that's fine, unless there's some problem with it, we'll overlook at that one first.
Right. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll.
Make a determination and come back to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Help and consideration on this year.
Sounds good. Alright.
Thank you for your.
Thanks for your work.
So what I'll bring to you next, wh- I'm not sure it'll be next meeting, but in the next couple would be a, an RFP with some information from council on. Here's how you can package things, here's how you might wanna do it and reach out to, and people who've done this before and also um real estate agents to, to get an idea of what that would look like, so you can start making that decision.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, they're all dry. So when you're.
You can get over Jamie's roll over there?
Yeah.
No, it's breakfast, Jamie.
See you later.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks. Bye guys, have a nice.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Gentlemen.
Okay.
So it's not a, I see the, um, the town. Questions in, that Chris is looking at here is, it's not a straight sale, like normally you, when you dispose of the land, you have to do it through a request for proposals and offer it. And go through all of the uh state procedures, so.
Oh, we've done it, we've tried a couple times and have got anything, so, right.
Yeah.
No interest, yeah, right.
Okay, um so moving on, the viewpoint cloud building department software information and contract.
Yes, I'm gonna call that up for you. So as part of the IT grant that we got last year, we talked about upgrading the building department software. So just wanted to show you what we're ready to commit to, we did a lot of investigation on this. This is also the, the software that uh Gardner uses, so we've been able to see it in real time and watch them implement it. They just implemented a couple months ago, so was able to, to use it, I was able to observe residents using it, um people applying for permits. So it's a, it's a platform, our, our website would link to this, this is called their storefront. Where um any information that we want can be put on here, you can also access it through a mobile device. And then if you look here on the left side, you can add different types of licensing later, if we wanted to do that, you could add board of health licensing, you could add um conservation commission licensing, a- any type of permitting.
Add additional cost each time, or?
Yes, it's different modules, so for us right now, we, we wanna only hold it to building, cause we don't think of the others would be cost effective yet, but it's, it's definitely expandable and people use it in many ways. So I was on Tingsborough's site today and, and they have every permit they have on. Um and I know Gardner has a plan to expand everything else too, so it's just an option, we wouldn't be there yet and for a while, but. So on the right side, you're seeing these internal workflows, so that, it's gonna allow us to be more coordinated, so we have unlimited users, our fire chief can get on this. Um our conservation commission, anyone that's involved in approving a permit will get emails and workflows and it'll make it a little bit more efficient. So when one person applies for something, everyone that's involved in that will then be involved internally in terms of the staff. We're gonna have some internal meetings about how to coordinate permits and just make it easier for people. And then this.
Where, where does the, sorry, but where, where does, so where does um, you know, troubleshooting go to? Does that just go to the service when people are trying to figure out how to use it or if there's a problem with it or whatever else, there's just a normal sort of help desk line thing?
Yes, so the, the feedback we got from Gardner is, most people need to be walked through it the first time, if, especially if they've been doing, doing it the old fashioned way, we'll call it, for a long time. Whereas they get a, a, a lot of people who just know how to do it intuitively, cause it, it is a, a pretty intuitive application.
Mm-hmm.
So they are, and, and what Mallory would be doing is walking people through, so if they come in and say, I wanna apply, she's going to apply for them on the computer or help them do it.
Mm-hmm.
What Gardner's saying is their foot traffic has been cut in half, because once you show someone how to do it, they don't wanna come in anymore and s- and, and deal with the inspectors anymore. So they, they do their permits and, and apply in that way. So eventually, we'd like to have a terminal and go to, a, a goal is within this year to not do any more paper permitting. There's a lot of benefits to this, the applicant can then log in and ask questions to the inspectors through the, through the portal and it goes right to their iPads that they bring with them on jobs. And they get answers a lot faster, so right now you'd have to call the office, Mallory would have to write it down, call Gardner, get an answer, call the resident back. This way, the um, especially some of the bigger contractors and stuff can just interact, if they're not already by phone in this way. The inspectors say this is really good, it allows them to be more efficient and, and people believe they're being more responsive. Uh it also allows Mallory to see an answer without having to contact one of the inspectors. So because they've already put notes in it and she's gonna be walked through the software as well, she can see where that application's at, what's holding it up, what's not, and provide that information in real time to the residents. So that's, that's a very good feature. You also pay online and do, and do all these things online, so we're, we're cutting down turnovers and, and other things internally that, that, that can cause issues. So there's that piece. There's another one pager here. So this is just really simplified, but you apply online through the storefront, even this is Mallory, uh depicted in this image, she's gonna process the permit for you, and there's our inspectors with their hats on, uh using their iPads, providing information, approvals get sent directly, and the permits get sent directly by email and and online, uh and then eventually you can expand s to all the your other types of permitting, I I think eventually every town will will do it this way, it's just gonna take smaller towns like ours a while to get there. So of course, cost matters, so that'll be the next part of this presentation. So we vetted this like crazy, um because we wanted to make sure that it w- that it was worth the money. So we've got it down to only the things we need to make this happen and to to provide the to meet the promises we're making here in terms of service delivery, and we cut out everything else, um the the poor software guy worked with us as we tried to get this cut down to as at least cost as possible, so what we have included is the actual software, the training, it's gonna interface with our master address table, which is what the assessors use, so we're using the actual uh data and not using something provided by someone like Google, and then they will work with us to make our storefront Hubbardston-esque, get our processes going, make sure it's all working well, and educate uh Mallory and other end users on how to use it, plus provide customer service. So we have more than half of this covered by our grant, and the rest will come from our um software budget, which we had planned to do something like this already. We used to pay about fifteen hundred for our software that was adequate, but not much more than Excel. Um, this will be more costly, about sixty seven hundred a year, but we feel like the the services are worth it, it modernizes us, makes us more efficient, tries to match that idea that we're trying to grow a little bit.
We can always take a look at it next year.
So this is, okay, so this is a one-year license deal, gotta renew it every year? So We won't have to pay the one-time costs, so the the renewing costs are the sixty seven hundred a year, which I have worked into the budget and believe that we can handle. And we can have unlimited users Yes. on it? And how about tech support? It's unlimited as well. Great. So we are ready to go pending your approval, if you do approve this, then we would start implementing it tomorrow, yeah, with the idea of it being up and running no later than January, February.
Okay, absolutely.
Sounds good.
So does this have to be a motion, or would you just wanna, okay?
Um, you vote to have me sign the contract.
Okay. And who who's the contract with?
With OpenGov.
I move to uh have uh to ask Ryan to sign the contract on our behalf uh with OpenGov.
One second now.
Discussion, all favor? Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Alright. Closer and closer to the twenty-first century.
Yes, we're getting there.
Alright, and uh the last for new business here is the welcome to Hubbardston signs.
So I teased these last time, we are ready to go, so the Economic Development Committee is leading this push, so the reason why they focused on this, the Economic Development Chapter of our slowly getting their master plan, talked about uh signage, um working on the sign bylaw, which which they've been doing with the Planning Board Committee, but also also branding and making sure that the town is visible, making sure businesses are visible. So to promote this, um and and this was something also done by Rutland, 'cause it was part of their recommendations as well, and other towns were not definitely not the first, uh to put in some welcome to Hubbardston signs, so this is the final design. Uh, these are, that is six feet wide by four feet tall, and gonna be a few feet in the air, so it it's much bigger than it looks, um.
Yeah. So a non-such apple?
That is what we were calling a non-such apple, yes.
Yeah.
Um. And if anybody knows where I can get a non-such apple tree, I would like to plant one, but the uh we went back and forth with the Economic Development Committee, should it be the seal, should it be whatever, they wanted to make it simplistic, but not s something that no one else has, so the shape is unique. And then the sponsored panel, so what this could be is, and it won't be yet, is um businesses who want to promote themselves and we wanna promote them, so that they're successful here, could get in and the EDC is working on what this might be, but an annual sponsorship that might feed into our special events or other economic development activities, um on the business side and then also promoting the the major events that we have, drawing people to town, um.
Are you only thinking annual, or could it be semi-annual, or you know?
There's still really, we didn't wanna rush that.
Whatever. Sure.
But we are gonna put two of these up next week, so this is ready to go, uh one of them is gonna go, oh, I have that, I'll just show it to you. So Ryan, is there gonna be a sponsor panel on these signs, or is that something you're gonna add to the signs down the road if we decide how we wanna manage that? So We we already have this paid for by a grant that's existed for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two of these, the the sign will be owed to us, so we can put it up whenever, they just wanna come up with the idea of of what that's gonna look like and take more time with it.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Uh So what you're actually putting up is this picture minus where you the sponsor panel that you have there? Yes. We also think that um we we only have so many businesses, the businesses will see the signs and then maybe be more willing to participate when they see it for real, how big it's gonna be and
Yep.
Right. how it might be able to help them.
Okay.
So I do know that um Rutland sold a few of these and they sold out in less than a day.
Oh wow.
It's a good deal for businesses.
Who who's gonna install it?
The sign maker installs it.
Okay, so they'll do all the
So today I went
day save stuff and all that the day after dinner.
I went with Travis and we reviewed the sites that the EDC is proposing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the sign maker is responsible for that.
Okay.
So the first location is, this is on the north side of Hubbardston on the Gardner line, um right in front of the Damalia family, uh who we spoke with today, and they're fine with the sign going there, it is on town land, but it will be in front of them, we wanted to make sure there would be no issues there, so it's coming up the hill as you go into Hubbardston where we normally put smaller advertising signs, it'll be nice and prominent, on the right side as you're coming south on sixty eight. Give me a landmark, where where what are you near?
Is that near Ashenbalks, the old 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 Ashenbalks?
Carpet, carpet, just before the state sign, that says entering Gardner, yeah.
Right at the Gardner line.
It's right next to the By the stables, right by the stables, yeah. If you're going towards Gardner, just after Rieta.
Yeah. Just before that.
Not quite to Gardner yet. But it'll be only for you coming south.
Mm-hmm.
What's the backside of it look like? Right now, it'll be facing the woods, but it is a beautiful green polyurethane, it's empty. Oh, it's going, it's going parallel to the road? Yeah, it'll be facing as you're coming. You won't be able to see the back the way it's tilted.
South.
Well, you will, but
So
I'm confused.
That doesn't make sense.
It's not, it's not too sighted.
Right.
It's facing you when you're going south.
Yeah, as you're coming from Gardner to Hubbardston, you'll see it. So it's perpendicular to the road? Yes, canted. Canted a little bit.
Okay.
It'll make sense when you see it. The backside is fully facing the woods, so. Okay. So I'm gonna see a post, just inside of a post as I come down the road? Coming from the north, yes, coming north, yes, you would.
But you have to just rubberneck a little bit to catch it on the way by.
It's almost like a billboard, kinda. Easier to explain, coming from Rutland.
Yeah, just gonna make the whole, the whole run.
S or Berry, 'cause uh the this south-facing one is going to be at the intersection of sixty eight and sixty two up on the hill, so you'll be able to see it from both uh the intersection coming from sixty two and also traveling
I mean, you don't really wanna see a welcome to Hubbardston sign as you're leaving Hubbardston.
Right.
So it's more like we're entering in, welcome.
Yeah.
I would have to say.
So the back of this one is facing that that residence there in the pond farther back, uh but you'll be staring at it as you're waiting to turn left from sixty two to sixty eight or seeing it as you go past.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we wa went there and and found a good spot for it, we also considered how far snow's gonna be thrown and if things are gonna be damaged, so we tried to stake it out correctly. Those are the first two spots, they're considering four more, but those we have only enough money for the first two, and then we'll see what happens.
Mm-hmm.
That's it, I wanted to show you that.
Okay, great.
You're the first to see it besides the Economic Development Committee. Um, and it should happen soon.
Okay. Alright, sounds good, moving on. Alright, item four is old business, so we've got the final review, uh promise of the fiscal year twenty one budget goals?
Yes.
Never promised that.
Sorry, I don't see them in here.
Neither do I.
No, we don't have that.
I'll fix that, I'll be right back. Fix it.
So refresh.
So the reason for reviewing this again, just wanted to make sure I captured um your hard work with the finance committee on what this year's gonna look like in terms of budget guidance, so this is really important, this is how the the departments, the committees, the boards are gonna present information to you that takes surprises out of the budget, uh make sure you're getting information the way you want it, so you can make good uh efficient decisions when it comes to budget season. So first is the first three pieces, uh if I captured it correctly, and we're here to change it if if I didn't. So first, reducing or eliminating the use of free cash to supplement the operating budget, um committed to reducing revenue estimates to ensure that there's a conservative approach to to budgeting, which we talk about all the time and and how we estimate our revenues, and then um make sure you're committed to meeting debt, capital expenditure and saving goals to maintain town services and protect the town's bond rating. So how, so those are kind of the high levels goals, how you'll meet that or how you're asking the departments to meet that is personnel pay increases will adhere to contracts or the classification and wage plan, which you have control over, and the requesters should not submit that in their budgets, that'll be handled um by the finance committee based off of this wage and classification plan, so it's not saying that they won't get pay increases, it's that they'll be determined based off available funds and in affair and and easy easier to understand why.
Okay.
And then all non-personnel line items will be level funded, and that if there is an increase, it needs to be submitted in writing and justified. Which worked very well last year when you gave that guidance. And then your budget priorities were to identify alternative sources of revenue, which we've taken loud and clear and and trying to run with, that you wanna offer competitive employee pay and that road maintenance is also a priority.
So the 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 item two there, the competitive employee pay, that was the um you know, sort of immediate, immediately try to
Yes.
make sure that we're at that level.
Based off the way you gave your guidance, you'll have control over what raises people get, except for the u- the union contracts and the other contracts.
Yep.
So if you want to move those up or down, you'll have that ability since it's being requested that way.
Okay.
So all things equal, if you pass the wage classification plan, everyone would just move in a step, and you'd have control that way, or you can add more or less based off of collars.
Sounds good to me, yeah. Sure. Thank you.
So this guidance will feed the department requests, which will go out later this month, and then start building the FY twenty one budget, sadly, we are quickly entering budget season.
Yeah.
Feels like we just passed it.
Yeah.
We do.
Okay. Anyone have any more questions on the uh budget goals, okay? Alright, we'll move on.
Right, and uh the capital plan, the CIPC did did not meet tonight, they're they're gonna meet Monday, but you'll have that next month as well as the financial forecast, you'll be able to look at the future stuff. That'll be simultaneous with department requests, and then you'll start seeing the new numbers based off all of that information.
Okay, sounds good, so we're up to item five, which is the town administrator report, and that's you.
So I just gave you the the first part, which is the, like to keep you updated on what we're doing with the budget, so uh CIPC, I as I said, is meeting and I'm finalizing the financial forecasting with the accounting department. Our department report, uh Mallory, our new uh land use assistant is is working really hard to put together and consolidate permit functions, part of it is this implementation of software, but she's al she's reached out to each of her board, she's working on on trying to streamline those operations, and s she's doing a great job, especially from only being here for two weeks. Um, and then we already talked about the viewpoint cloud software, which is run by OpenGov, which we'll be implementing in the next couple of months. In terms of financial management, so the town accountant and I are working towards financing finalizing this open checkbook concept that you've been hearing me talk about. So we have a budget versus actual, what this report is, it tells town boards, departments and committees, um here's what you've spent so far in relation to what you've appropriated, so that we're tracking our budget, making sure we're not going over. What we're adding to this is the detail online for people to see of the actual expenditures we're making in each one of the line items, so this isn't this isn't new, you could always request this, but we're just making it available to show everyone uh what we're spending the taxpayer dollars on. So this will be available on the website, and I'm gonna give you a view of it. Probably gonna have to include a little instructions, 'cause it's not the clearest document, but just calling it up here. So again, for each line of the budget, you will see um approved expenditures, Jeff, you've seen this, the warrants, e- each e- every single item, from a pen to a to a road. Okay, so start with okay, accounting. So you'll see the accountant line item, the department for accountant, and then each time that some a check is warranted, so you see the first part is how much was appropriated, and every time a check goes out, you'll see who the check went to, what the total was, what's remaining. Uh, so you'll see in this one, there's payments for services, we pay Templeton, and we're paying Kinsher from the beginning of the year for accounting services, and then the supplies they need to do their jobs. We're trying to make it as open and transparent as possible, so people can see see what we're doing, taking the mystery out of it.
And that's um updated monthly, or how how?
It'll be monthly, so monthly we'll put it out, the same way we put out our other information, hey, this is available, if you wanna check it out, ask questions, feel free. And when you say people, you mean anybody who has access to the town website? Which is anybody. Anyone with internet. Um, and and we expect to get some some questions from that a and we welcome it, we want people to know how we're spending the money, we feel like we do it pretty efficiently. So capital projects, Jeff and I continue to work on the school roof building committee and are meeting weekly with the feasibility study, OPM and architects, so for those watching, feasibility study is boiled down, how much is this project gonna cost? We have a project manager that's helping us facilitate that, and the architect is going through um testing and other things to decide how much this project's gonna cost. This feasibility study will say, these are the options that are available, and that's what we'll be going to town meeting with to say, which one of these options do we choose and and which one are we gonna uh attempt to fund?
Does anyone from the school join in?
Oh yeah, so um Dr. Muir, uh Cheryl DeValle, who's uh in charge of operations and finance.
Yeah. Sheila.
Sheila Sheila Muir is the superintendent, and Claire Barnes, who's in charge of building and grounds, are on every call. Um, and Jeff went and did s some of the testing and and has been involved heavily in viewing the roof and and seeing what's going on in the ground level as well.
Yeah.
And then there's like thirty different people from the OPM and architect team that that participate. So we will be providing, and you'll be getting a lot more information about the school roof very soon, um we're also working on, so construction timeline for the roof, it will not be next summer, it'll be twenty twenty one, so this is just the study that talks about the construction for potential approval in the summer, and then the next summer, twenty twenty one, is when you would see shingles fly if the project is approved. And then office computers, so we keep talking about this end of life, Windows seven is going going out of style, not being useful anymore, so we're uh rapidly replacing our computers, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, we have a year to do it, but we're getting well ahead of it, so we're we're not behind, this is an approved expenditure from town meeting. Also, the Board of Health and the
Hey, sorry to interrupt, but the uh computers that Hey, sorry to interrupt, but the uh computers that that we um that we get rid of, do those go towards like surplus account or do they, is it part of the transaction of replacing the computer itself?
It's mostly part of the transaction. They don't have a lot of value, if any.
Okay.
Um where am I at? Uh board of health and planning board are both working within their own accounts to to get what you guys have, which is a little bit more digital, so so more modernizing of our operations. They want uh Chromebook computers to run their meetings and working with the board of health to have um inspection-ready computers as well for their inspectors. Town infrastructure, um unfortunately, we weren't selected for the Massworks grant on Lombard Road. Uh we worked with TEC for this application, I've spoken with our legislators, and we have a call in with uh the state. Um it does not look like they're giving out a lot of small-town strap grants right now, uh preferring mostly uh what they're considering economic development-driving type projects. Doesn't mean we're not gonna stop applying and I'll I'll continue to um push for paving projects, 'cause as I've been telling the state, paving is economic development for Hubbardson. Um just 'cause it's not connected to a a mall or something, some economic, it's the only way that people get into town and and spend money in our town, so um we'll need the board to to um lobby on behalf of the town with our elected officials and say, you know, we need these grants, we we can't survive without them. We do a good job with chapter ninety, but it's not enough. The human resources, so we're now fully compliant with our benefit and accrual tracking, so I have a hundred percent accountability of um all employee accr- accruals and then other needs that I did during a human resources audit, as I said I would focus on. We changed our dental insurance plan at no cost to the town to be more beneficial for our employees. Um we also added vision at no cost to the town for employees to use on a voluntary basis, just trying in in small ways, non-budget affecting ways to to make our town more attractive as as an employer. And then we're starting to build out that classification wage plan for FY twenty-one, you'll see that in January. And I'm receiving bids from consultants for our updating of town human resource policy, so we can become compliant with that as well. Human resources has been a major focus of mine this fall and will continue to be for a couple of months. Then uh I would like to, I have two, I have one ad hoc recog- recognizing, but this one as well. So our library director, Christine Bar- Bar- Barra uh had the storytime folks, the the young students, not yet students, soon-to-be students, come into town hall and do a Chris uh Halloween parade with their costumes on. Town staff was also in our costumes for Halloween, it's just a cool event. Um the kids really like it and then they do storytime and and get to do reading. And also, she's uh used some of that increased library assistant wage money to offer more children's programming, this storytime idea, family book club and others. So just wanted to recognize the library is doing a good job taking care of our our young young students who aren't quite yet in the school system, getting them getting them to read, which is very important. Uh just wanted also to recognize our our fire department. Um the day after that unfortunate tragedy in in Worcester, or that night after, they were called out in, you know, not sub-zero, but very, very cold weather to assist another town uh in a in a structure fire. Uh just a reminder of just how incredibly brave our public safety officials are, they they do their work in the worst weather, 'cause that's usually when bad things happen. And uh also while grieving and trying to cover down for other departments that are that are focused on this tragedy. So just wanted to call attention to them, always thinking about them and appreciative of the work that they do. It's a dangerous job and uh we're lucky to have people who are willing to do it.
They um pretty much shut down Worcester for a while today.
Yep.
It was like just everywhere closed, it was like, yeah, it was it was, it was a big, big deal.
The whole canal area, yeah. Yep. It's right by the rink that we go to three nights a week.
Oh yeah.
So that was shut down too, so.
So there's um there's some upcoming topics that you should be aware of, this benchmarking idea is coming to you finally. So the planning board has picked their five towns that they think Hubbardson should should aspire to be. The finance committee's picked ten towns that they believe that we're financially compatible with. So we're we're gonna sit down as three boards and and come up with a list of five, ten, fifteen towns that we can compare ourselves to, it's just another data point for things like budgeting and software decisions and staffing decisions.
Permits, I mean everything, right?
Yeah, so it'll be just a ready little resource for, you know, hopefully you say things like, well, how does this compare to our benchmark towns and you can get that data readily available. Um getting a tax title plan together, it's been pending for a while, um you specifically asked for it, so I'm focusing on that and getting it done. The five-year capital planning forecast we've talked about and the budget requests are coming as well to be submitted before Christmas, so we're only s- yeah, like six weeks away from that, so. That's what's coming up.
Okay, thanks a lot. Uh and then we are back to policies for review, we've got a couple of them here, we've got the annual vacation amendment, you wanna go through these individual, I'll sort of just read them and then you can comment on them as you see fit, but the first is the annual vacation amendment, the second is the Corey policy, the third is the military leave policy and the fourth is the part-time employee hours and compensation.
Yes. So the annual vacation, there's not much to each one of these, that that was passed last year by this board. Uh it adopted us a policy that loads more vacation time upfront, so we can try and retain employees while taking some off the back, 'cause we can't really uh afford to lose an employee for five weeks, but we can afford to give them the time upfront, so they're willing to stay and work for us, so we just amended that a little bit. It'll be incorporated into the new handbook. Um so it's my recommendation that that amendment just stays the same. The Corey policy. Corey is required for um for anybody who wants to work or volunteer for the town, and this policy is just stating that that that's the policy. And also be rolled into the human resources guide, uh I don't believe anything needs to be done to this one. And you recently also passed a military leave policy, which will be rolled into the human resources guide, and I don't think there any needs to be any change there. We were working with um some compensation time for part-time employees. Real succinctly, we budget, let's say, I mean, you make up numbers, a hundred hours for the year. And each each week, an employee's supposed to work two hours. Well, some weeks, the day they work falls on a holiday or they're sick or et cetera. So we we wanted to use those hours more flexibly and say, okay, we'll bank a couple hours and you work four hours this week instead of two. That's what this policy was trying to accomplish, just trying to be more flexible. It's not best practice to do it that way. What is best practice is for employees to manage their time and for me to watch their hours. So they can work four hours one week and get paid and then not work um the hours the next week. I need to make sure that they're not doing that in bunches, right, so we have resident services and they need to make sure that they're understanding that if we go over appropriation, then they're out of hours. So it's a long kind of intro to this policy's no longer needed and I'm recommending that you rescind it.
It's no longer needed 'cause we don't follow it?
We won't be, no.
So I'll make a motion, we rescind the part-time employee um hours and compensation policy.
And in the same motion, can we approve the other three?
Yeah, and and approve the other three as presented.
Second motion.
Discussion. On favor?
Yeah, I got a I got a discussion
Discussion, yeah.
on the uh so basically, all you all you what you wanna do by rescinding this policy is just add more flexibility into when the employees can work their hours, right? I mean
Yeah, so we can't give comp time to part-time employees, so that
Right.
that part needs to be rescinded. Um I just think it's redundant and our the idea behind these policies is to not have policies to have policies, so I think this one can go away. Because yes, we are just going to make sure that we're being flexible with employee hours and also making sure resident services are taken care of.
Right.
It's the way we have been working since the beginning of the fiscal year and and it is working. We're within appropriation and properly compensating our employees.
Okay, further discussion? Move the question. On favor?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Okay, appointments and resignations, do we have any?
None.
There are none, it's first in a while. Committee updates, uh besides canceling this Thursday's town center committee meeting, 'cause we didn't have anything new. Um I have no other real updates besides the fact that there should be notice of a public hearing anytime soon on the twenty-five percent design, so soon as I find that exact out, you don't know that beyond me knowing it, do you? No, okay, I'll let everybody know, but uh that's it for that. Matter's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I guess just one thing that popped into my head is last time we ta- after I I went to OCAM a few weeks ago, a month ago now, whatever, it sat in front of the select board, talked about maybe asking for some time at the other select boards, have you contacted any of the others?
Yeah, so I've been working with Andrew and Barry. Um Barry seems the next logical stop. And looking at a meeting, so they have the same meeting night as as this board?
Yep.
So we're talking, should we send a rep to their board during that meeting night or have another meeting where you can all meet? Or send meeting reps to one or the other. Um but it looks like first week in December is when when it's gonna work out.
Okay.
If you have any preferences there.
Doesn't matter, we'll make it work. Um anybody else? Anything else that they uh popped up as we're moving along? No, nothing? Okay, public uh press question, answer? No?
I moved to Jaren.
One second now.
Okay, any discussion? On favor, Jaren and yes?